This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting places sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Speak into the microphone if you come up to talk. Assistive listening devices are available. Lieutenant, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
Councilwoman Walcovitz?
Here.
Or Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
I have a great honor tonight to award a proclamation for her many, many years of service to Highland Park, to one of our prides and jewels of this municipality, Ms. Diane Feldman. Whereas Diane Feldman has been a resident of Highland Park for over thirty years, whereas Diane Feldman joined the Borough's Commission for the Disabled in 2001 and was named chairperson of the commission in 2004, the commission was reconstituted as the Commission for Universal Access to focus on facilitating social as well as physical access to all activities in the borough. And whereas Diane Feldman and the Commission for Universal Access have worked with the borough of Highland Park to improve access to all borough buildings, and whereas Diane Feldman, as chairperson of the Commission for Universal Access, receives all planning board applications and reviews them, focusing on accessibility, and whereas Diane Feldman has been instrumental in the implementation of the Buddy Ball program, hosting two successful service dog presentations, developing the ACT Out Theater Arts Group for adults with disabilities, creation of an adaptive yoga program, and an emergency radio distribution program for persons with disabilities. In recognition of the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the commission sponsored an hour of activities with the Police Department at the National Night Out event in August. And whereas Diane Feldman has decided to step down as chairperson and to serve as a regular member of the Commission for Universal Access, and whereas the governing body of the borough of Highland Park would like to thank Diane Feldman for her professionalism and dedication to service, now therefore I, Gail Brill-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, hereby proclaim Diane Feldman to be a real and true Highland Park treasure of the borough of Highland Park. And on behalf of the residents of the borough of Highland Park, I do hereby express the thanks and appreciation of the community for her years of service. Thank you, Diane. I do want to tell everyone that I joined the Borough Council in 2009, and one of the areas that I had as one of my first responsibilities was the Commission for Universal Access. And I walked into my first meeting, and Diane said, "You better not leave this commission for the next two years because everybody who comes here winds up leaving." And this is how we do things here, and this is what we need to get accomplished. And by golly, she got everything she needed to get accomplished for our residents while she was chairperson, and I'm sure now as she continues on in a role on the commission. So, thank you very much, Diane. And did you want to say anything? Not at all. First of all, Gail, thank you very much. This is really an honor. I want to thank everyone who's been on the commission over the years, and we've got a number of people sitting here in the audience tonight. This is something that we all do together, and everything that you've listed was a team effort. I want to thank all the people who, over the years, have been liaisons to the commission, whether from the Borough Council, or the police, or the Board of Ad. It's really been truly a team effort, and I want to thank everyone. It's been a pleasure being the chair. Thank you, Diane. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held December 8th, 2016 through December 20th, 2016, as distributed?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Council report. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
I have no report tonight. I think it's going to be, I know, it's a surprise. It's going to be a little bit longer night, so I'm going to yield my report to the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Fine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very quickly, tonight, the Finance Committee, which I chair, is going to introduce a resolution to request approval for the proposed 2017-2018 Community Development Block Grant Fund allocation. The proposed use of the Community Development Block Grant Funds allocated to the borough of Highland Park for the funding period 2017 to 2018 are as follows: $5,000 to Main Street Highland Park for the facade improvement program; $6,636 for senior transportation. These are, the next couple of items are specifically for the Department of Recreation and Arts; $9,765 for a senior outreach program; $6,636 for the senior medical transportation program; $9,765 for a summer camp program; $7,765 for the teen youth programming and outreach. That's for the Department of Recreation and Arts; $4,000 for summer camp scholarship program; $7,000 for teen center; and $2,000 for the food pantry. So the total expected Community Development Block Grant Funds that, again, Highland Park expects to receive for 2017-2018 is $58,567. If the resolution passes, and there should be a reduction in the Community Development Block Grant allocation, then the reduction will be divided evenly to each project. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sustainable Highland Park has entered our town into the solar challenge to get our residents and businesses all to go solar. As many of you may know, we're competing with other municipalities in the state to really get more solar installations than they have, and it's an opportunity for us to really put our green foot forward in Highland Park. As folks may also be aware, solar prices now are at record lows, and technology has increased significantly. This means that if a few years ago, solar panels didn't work for your budget, or you were told that maybe you had a roof that was inappropriate for installing solar, you might actually find that those things have changed. And so Sustainable Highland Park has actually set up a website, hpsolar.org, which will allow residents and businesses to apply to get free quotes from solar installers that have been pre-qualified, to show you how much you could potentially save on your energy bills, and look at a variety of options that might be available to you. We just had an information center, information session in January, but are going to continue to work to get information out about the program. We also have agreed to work with Councilperson Hirsch on working to provide assistance to the Housing Authority, who's interested in exploring solar on their roof as well. But it's something that all residents and businesses in the town should take an opportunity to go to hpsolar.org and get a free quote. It doesn't take anything except time, and you may wind up doing a significant amount to save money on your energy bills, and also help contribute to a cleaner planet and help stave off some of the worst impacts of climate change that we're facing. The broader sustainability, we're working to, on our Sustainable Highland Park Recertification this year. It is an annual process instead of doing it every few years. We have a kickoff meeting happening February 16th at 7:00 PM. At that meeting, we're going to celebrate our 2016 Silver Certification that we received, as well as allowing partner groups and others to talk about the actions they've worked on and what they can do moving forward, and have breakout discussions to talk about collaboration across various institutions within the borough to help make our town even more sustainable than we've already been, and continue to maintain that Silver Certification. We're also looking into electric vehicle charging stations. One of the barriers people have to getting electric vehicles is a fear about running out of a charge while you're driving around. And there's networks that are growing of charging stations to help address this issue. There are grants available from New Jersey DAP and Sustainable Jersey to support the installation of these electronic charging stations, and we'll be talking more to the council and DPW about the potential for working to install at least one and potentially other electric vehicle charging stations in Highland Park, which we think could potentially help residents of the town, but also help our shopping district as well by providing opportunities for electric vehicle owners to come into Highland Park and charge their car while they're shopping in our downtown. We also are nearing completion of the Recycle Coach app, which really Councilwoman Walcovitz has played a tremendous role in working to bring to fruition. I have the benefit of taking over for Public Works, and will soon be rolling that program out by the end of February. There's just a few data issues that need to be put into the app and to merge it with the existing database, and this will be a really important tool that will enable us to keep residents updated about a variety of things, from, you know, things like when trash pickups happening to when bulk collection is. And I know I missed the last bulk collection day because it just slipped my mind when it was happening. It would have been great to get a reminder message. This will help to do those things for individuals. We're also, I'd like everybody to save the date for April 23rd, which is when Highland Park will be celebrating Earth Day at the Environmental Education Center from 11 to 3:00 PM. We're going to, we'll have planning meetings over the next month at the Environmental Commission to finalize the details of that, but I can tell you there'll be a number of organizations and vendors and individuals there working to do more to not just celebrate our green thumb that we have in Highland Park, but also to really look to help individual residents find ways that they can be more sustainable in themselves. I'd like to give a brief update that the students from the Environmental Club shared at the Sustainable Highland Park meeting. And this is really an amazing project. They're actually taking on a tree program, and so many folks might know there's a tree that was about 180 years old, two magnificent oak trees out front of the high school that were recently taken down, and they've really, you know, played a role, I know for many people in the town who've been here for far longer than I have, and it's a memory that people have seen these trees coming in and out of school on a daily basis. And they've actually partnered with an organization called Nature's Fell, who's actually going to be creating handcrafted projects out of the wood from this tree that individuals can take. And so this nonprofit organization is actually putting these together, and you can actually make donations to actually get one of these pieces of art from Nature's Fell. The website, if you'd like to do that, is nature'sfell.com, or you can call Scott Alexander at Nature's Fell at 732-624-9011 to arrange for a custom order of one of these pieces. It will take about a year from the time of your order to actually get the piece because it takes time for the wood from the tree to actually be at the state where it can be worked with and preserved properly. And then I also would like to give a brief update about a new program that Rutgers is working to bring to fruition, and it's called Rutgers Night Share. It's a bike share program that people may have seen in other communities like Hoboken, New York City, and elsewhere, where you're able to actually check out a bike with a credit card and drive it around town or to other places. And this Night Share program, the vision is that it will be in communities throughout, in places throughout the region of the Rutgers community, including Highland Park, Piscataway, parts of East Brunswick and Edison, New Brunswick, of course, where people will be able to check out bikes and ride them and check them back in for a modest fee. There is a survey that we will be circulating for Rutgers to help get information for this program, and the survey will help Rutgers to determine which areas of Highland Park would be best able to utilize a bike share program, where are the best places for us to put them. So we'll be sending that survey out shortly. I encourage people to please fill out and send in that survey so that we can get an accurate representation of really what the biking transportation needs are in Highland Park for these things. And then, and then we're also going to be planning two information sessions in March where individuals can come and learn more about the program that Rutgers is proposing, ask questions of people who are proposing, and also give feedback on the plans that are being presented for this Night Share program. I think it's a really great opportunity for Highland Park to have this program coming forward, and will hopefully increase the non-fossil fuel-based transportation options available to all of our residents. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Senior Center Recreation has been very busy. Some of the programs that Councilman Walsh was working on as liaison have been implemented. The winter basketball season is mid-season. The director told me today that the participation was the largest yet. The registration packets for spring flag football and baseball should be available by the end of the week or at the latest early this week. The programs will be going out, and again, the provisions will be there for reduced fees for participation for those who can, need to make the application. The summer camp packets as well will be going out by the end of the week or early next week. Spring programming for the remainder of the spring season will be posted very, very shortly and circulated by flyer as well. The AMC Lowes Matinee Movie Trip is Tuesday, the 21st at 10:30. Transportation is free this year for the trip to the New Jersey Flower Show on Thursday, the 23rd of this month, from 12:30 to 3:00. However, you have to purchase the tickets at the door for the event itself for $15. Transportation to the Philadelphia Flower Show, which actually has quite a turnout, is on Tuesday, March 14th. We'll provide transportation for $15 down and back. The trip is from 8:30 in the morning till sometime in the afternoon when everyone's ready to return. It's a little bit flexible. Tickets at the door at the Philadelphia Exhibition Hall are $35. The next senior luncheon is on Tuesday, February 14th at 12 o'clock. It will be a celebration of Valentine's Day. We'll actually have musical entertainment by Ornie Abrams. The new Tuesday lunch program, which has been implemented, has been very well received. Members at the Senior Center and the community are enjoying hot and kosher meals each Tuesday. It starts at approximately 11:45. If anyone's interested, you can join up at the center. You can get the monthly menus. It's a $5 contribution, or takeout can be arranged. So if you want to get on the list and join up, you just need to stop by the center or call up. The center is offering free tax assistance, which is sponsored actually by United Way, to anyone in the community that meets the necessary guidelines, basically an income of under $64,000 for New Jersey, and some other qualifications. It's available every Wednesday between 9:00 to 2:00 PM. I'll give you the contact number for all these in a second. There's now an onsite barber available for men's and women's haircuts on the second Thursday of every month for $7. However, for special arrangements, you should call ahead. Podiatrist care is also available on the second Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00, but again, for all appointments, a special arrangement has to be made in advance. The number for all of those programs is 732-819-0052. Finally, the fireworks have been tentatively scheduled for Sunday, July 2nd, with a rain date of Sunday, July 9th, in partnership with New Brunswick, and the event planning will proceed around the same plans that have been the last few years very, very successfully. I heard rumors last year that the count was actually close to the actual population of Highland Park turned out in the park. And living on South Second, I can testify that there were crowds walking by for five hours after the event. With regard to the Arts Commission, the newly reconstituted Art Commission has been very, very busy the last few months. A number of events are already planned and in place. On Tuesday, February 21st, and every week for eight weeks, Angela Karyadis will conduct a solo show as a teaching artist to teach people how to conduct, to present their work at the Senior Center. There'll be more information after Thursday's Art Commission's meeting, this Thursday, which we will have up on the website. It's too late to make book on the Falcons versus the Patriots, unfortunately, but our own Amy Pollak, who's on the Arts Commission, will be making book in Highland Park. So Chief, don't rush out and bust her. She is going to be demonstrating bookbinding and bookmaking, what's called concertina paging and also folios, at the library. It's limited, unfortunately, to a class of 20. It'll be on February 28th, and more information for that project is actually on the library site. It is a joint project with the library. The Arts Commission has developed a website with the assistance of member Nicole Wines of the commission, which should be finally rolled out shortly. We've seen the test clips of it, and it's working extremely well. The trick here is that, due to some obnoxious councilman suggestion, as well as the nature of the artists who form this herd of cats, that it's going to incorporate all other artists' organizations in town and the area, and they're trying, and they've been reaching out to all of the arts, which includes music, vocal, and plastic arts as well as the visual arts, to expand what is really going on in the quote "art scene" in Highland Park, which is worlds bigger, I think, than anyone suspects. And all those have links on the website. In addition, the Arts Commission has gotten other arts websites to start putting Highland Park's art on their website, so that Highland Park's Arts Committee, all our arts events, even the Artist Collective, which is an informal group that I've been meeting with on Sundays, is involved in that. So all of this information is on the websites. And finally, some of our Highland Park artists are actually getting out there in the ether, on the internet, so that people are aware. The Highland Park, the Arts Commission's working with the Art Collective to reinstitute the Open Studios Tours, which is a lot of planning and may have in past years faltered because of being overplanned, but they are looking at a new format for that and hope to reinstitute it this year. A big project, which will soon be very visual for everyone in town, is sculptures in the park, is under discussion with the County Parks and Recreation Program, but due to some contracting issues inciting, the focus now is on actual placement of sculptures downtown in partnership with the Mason Grove Sculpture Class, and that is moving forward. We are actually touring sites tomorrow morning and finalizing the contract negotiations. And I would just say that this Arts Commission has revitalized a lot of the old-school artists in town, but also is attracting the new millennial artists and the other artists that have moved in under the radar in town. It's a very vital group, and we hope to see a lot more from them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. It has been a busy few weeks, but first I would just like to say how wonderful it is to see so many familiar and new faces here in the room. This is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that comes out of these meetings, and hopefully it gives everybody a good idea about how you can get involved with areas that interest you. Just a few things, the food pantry, there will be a food, there'll be a food pantry distribution Thursday, February 9th, from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM here at the Senior Center. The food pantry is open to anybody who lives or works in Highland Park and who needs food assistance. For information, please contact Nicole Huff at 732-819-0052. Related to the food pantry, a few weeks ago, we discussed painting the back room where they, where the food pantry stores its food. Mike from DPW brought over a book of paint colors, and they're going to review and see and see how they can get on their schedule. And I'm also pleased to report that the food pantry received a $2,000 Community Development Block Grant, and that we have a credit of just over $500 from a previous year's grant. Thank you to Kathy Kovak and Dan Bianchini for facilitating the program, and we look forward to the possibilities there. The Commission for Universal Access, hello, which several, several members are here, met on February 2nd, and I'm happy to report that the commission's fund, which is capitalized through revenue collected from handicap parking violations, is at more than $12,000. And just for other boards and commissions, I mean, that's, that's a really innovative way to capitalize funds, to help promote your initiatives, and I would look forward to other, other boards and commissions, thinking outside the box like that. Commissioner Diane Feldman, who was honored tonight for her, for her service, she is, we also discussed seeking additional grant opportunities by attending a workshop hosted by the Cultural Access Network Project, which is an initiative of the New Jersey Theater Alliance, which works to make live theater accessible to everybody and serving as a cultural access resource for the state's theaters and cultural community. The Commission for Universal Access, also, we also discussed a new senior van. There is a bid in formation. Kim McGraw at the Senior Center is working with Mobility Works, and that, and that will be going out to bid in the next few weeks, so stay tuned. Hopefully, I'll have something to report at the March meeting. The Highland Park Housing Authority will hold its next meeting tomorrow, February 8th, at 6:30 PM at the Samuel Cronin Building, right next door. The board is currently in the midst of, and this is a big deal that has occupied actually a lot of the housing authority's time, they're in the midst of transitioning to what's called a rental assistance demonstration, and that's a HUD, a HUD program that encourages public housing authorities to enter into an agreement with an investor in order to retain, in order to acquire capital for building improvements. This, it's a multi-year agreement because HUD no longer provides emergency capital funding for its public housing facilities. The stewardship of the property, I should note though, remains public, and the housing is still public, including vouchers, so this affects only the asset. But this is, this is, this is, this will be happening in the next few months, and I look forward to reporting back on that. I'm also happy to report, just echoing what Councilman Walsh discussed, that the Housing Authority is in talks with Sustainable Highland Park to see if solar panels can be installed on the roof of the Cronin Apartments through the Borough's Solar Program. And this would be a good opportunity because the 100 units over at the Cronin Building, they need a new roof, and so hopefully through this capital, through their new arrangement, they can also at the same time simultaneously work with Highland Park's solar program. Just an update on the municipal ID program. You might remember back in November, on November 1st, we passed an ordinance that approved the Borough's Municipal ID Program. Last week, I met with Diane Roman from the Office of Housing and Social Services in Perth Amboy, and her department is the department there that issues their city's municipal ID Program. Ours will be issued out of our Recreation Department. She showed me the equipment they use and their marketing materials, and it was very useful to hear about their program's implementation and how they interact with their business, immigrant, youth, and senior. immigrant, youth, and senior communities, which all benefit from the, from, from the ID card. I've also been working with Shane Santalucia, our information technology, our information technology coordinator, on familiar, on familiarizing ourselves with the equipment that will produce our municipal ID. We're hoping for a soft launch by the end of this month, where municipal officials and employees will receive the card, and then the program will be open to the entire community this spring. The date is yet to be determined, but please stay tuned. Just a little bit on the Board of Health, Dan Bianchini and I, Dan Bianchini is administrative assistant here at the, at the Borough. We met with Freeholder Santi Nara at her office in downtown New Brunswick to discuss possibilities about various mosquito and awareness initiatives. This has been a focus of the Board of Health for several, several years, and they've launched their own, their own, their own ideas and initiatives as well, so we want to see how the county can help support some of our goals. On January thirty-first, Mayor Brolmittler and I attended a forum hosted by Congressman Frank Pallone in Perth Amboy that provided a discussion about the many concerns communities are feeling from President Donald Trump's recent executive actions. In attendance were representatives from the Reformed Church of Highland Park, the Latino Action Network, New Jersey Working Families Alliance, the Puerto Rican Action Board, Menave, SEIU, Citizen Action, New Jersey Catholic Conference, Lutheran Episcopal Advocacy Ministry of New Jersey, Catholic Charities Diocese of Metatchen, Unitarian Universalist Legislative Ministry of New Jersey, New Labor, Immigration Voice, and the Piscataway Board of Education. A lot of really important stakeholders in the room, really just discussing ideas and concerns and what communities can do and, and what's happening at the, at the congressional level in light of everything that's going on. So, you know, information is key, and everything feels like it's moving at a mile a minute right now, but the more, the more communities are involved and know what's happening at the federal level and what resources they can, they have access to at the local level, the better. On Saturday, February fourth, Councilwoman Foster Dublin and I attended the first-ever Pan-African flag raising at the County Administration Building in New Brunswick in recognition of Black History Month. The event was hosted by the Middlesex County Young Democrats Black Caucus and the Board of Chosen Freeholders. Congratulations to the honorees, Freeholder Kenneth Armwood, Sheriff Mildred Scott, Matthew Vaughn of South River, Reginald Johnson, and the Reverend, and the Reverend Dr. Ronald Owens. It's not every day that you get to hear such inspiring speakers, so today was, so Saturday was a particularly special day for Middlesex County. And then just one last thing, last night, the Middlesex County Chapter of the Brady Campaign held a gun safety and awareness event at the Senior Center, thanks to Chief Risco and Detective McGraw for answering questions and providing advice to, to the folks in the room. We discussed legislation, the overall political climate, and how we can take action as a community, particularly related to information for parents of young children, on how to ask other parents about the presence of guns when making playdates. Stay tuned for more on that. They're really looking, looking to, 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 to do some big things this year. Thank you to Karen Cantor for facilitating that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch, and thank you for jumping in with both feet in your new responsibilities. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. When I first joined council, I chaired the Health and Human Services Committee, and I worked very closely with Diane Feldman for three years, and it was a great pleasure. Diane, I thank you very much for your intelligence and your commitment to our town and for educating our community about accessibility for all. I'm also very proud to see so many people in the audience tonight for the important issues that I, that will be heard this evening. I'm pleased to report that our zoning board has approved plans for a new learning center for Chinese students to open at one sixty-eight Woodbridge Ave. The building hasn't been occupied for a while. The learning center will tutor Chinese-speaking students in the area. The business owner currently runs a successful learning center in Metatchen and seeks to expand that business. We're eager to see new thriving businesses open on Woodbridge Avenue. Our redevelopment agency has been working diligently. Tonight, we have the first reading of an ordinance to move ahead with the expansion of a building of the international market on Raritan Avenue near Second. With thanks to the recommendations of the Planning Board working with our redevelopment agency, the proposal will expand with new office space below and additional apartments for rent upstairs. Tonight, we'll be approving our Main Street facade and awning improvement contract. Main Street continues to offer grants of up to three thousand dollars to new businesses for facade improvements, improving the look and feel of our downtown, not only just for our residents, but for all the shoppers and the business owners. We're further delighted to have just been awarded an additional five thousand dollars from a Community Development Block Grant funds to continue this program in future years. Spring is around the corner, and I have another save the date. Sunday, May seventh, is our ninth annual Highland Park ever-expanding five K road race, kids' races, and our street fair. If you're interested in reserving a booth, please contact Main Street, and please save the date. There's no Planning Board meeting this month in February. We will resume in March. And lastly, tonight, we will be passing a resolution in, in support of our district public schools to help stop the expansion of charter schools. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a brief report. I'm very happy to see so many people here tonight to, to come and talk with us. I hope that we get to see you here more than just one night. It's important for us to hear from our residents about the things that are important to you. As Councilman Hirsch mentioned, our Park Partners Program is going to have its voting session this Sunday from two to four P. M. at the Senior Center. For those of you who are not aware of the Park Partners Program, it is a give-back program where residents can submit grant proposals for dreams they have to help make Highland Park an even better place to live. The residents then come in, and you actually can vote for the top five grants or projects in five different categories, so you have a chance to really impact how some of your tax dollars will be spent. So I hope you'll come and vote. This is, as I said, our third year, and we had more grant submissions this year than ever before. So I'm very pleased about the program and the ability to have you contribute to what we should be doing here. As Councilman Hirsch mentioned, I was honored to sit on a roundtable in Perth Amboy with many members of different communities and organizations, and to share the table with, with our Congressman Pallone and Mayor Diaz from Perth Amboy. And we look forward to continuing to work with them on many different projects. Also, last week, our police chief and I believe two of our officers had an opportunity to meet with Pastor Seth, who is here tonight, and some of our residents in Highland Park to talk about the refugee situation as it exists currently here. And I do want to say that we are looking, as, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned, we have the ID Program in, in place. He is chairing a task force on immigration and refugee integration into our community and things we can do to make that an easier process. And we will be discussing later in our conference session a possible resolution for going forward here in Highland Park. That being said, do we have any public discussion tonight? If you'd like to come up, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Go ahead. Just state your name and address, please.
Diane Feldman, four oh nine North Fourth Avenue. The, I'm excited about the Park Partners. The one thing I want to ask is make sure you've got enough voting forms.
Yes, I know.
Because I believe we, there was an issue, it was so popular last year.
Yes, we ran out of forms and had to run to the Police Department, which was the only place open, to run copies, to, to have additional forms available. Thank you for that reminder, Diane. Okay, good night. Mr. Gross, please come up and state your name and address.
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. Madam Mayor, I would like to find out who is in charge of these buttons on the avenue for the pedestrians to cross. I'm referring right now, right by St. Paul's Church. If the pedestrian wants to cross Raritan Avenue, that button has not been working now over a month. Now, over on First Avenue, that button, again, by the confectionery store, is not functioning right. I've been trying to find out who is in charge. Maybe somebody can get this, get these, both of these buttons to work so the pedestrians, especially the ladies pushing their babies and the handicapped people, can cross the street in safety.
Right. So, so Mr. Gross, thank you for reporting those incidents. The, the trap, the buttons belong to the traffic lights, which belong to the Department of Transportation, which is based out of Trenton, but we can certainly communicate that information to them, correct, Chief? So please, anybody who sees any lights that are not working properly, feel free to give us a call, and we'll make sure we get in touch with Trenton on that.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you right now.
Yeah.
They, you said to call you. I'm telling you right now, these buttons are not functioning right.
But, but yes, I, I made a note of it, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Call the Police Department, Mr. Gross. Is there anyone else who sees a traffic light on or is probably coming?
Did you hear that? Do you want me to repeat it?
I think I heard the officer say, call the Police Department.
Yes.
Before, before I sit down, I would like to bring out to the Borough Council and all the members of Highland Park, in New Brunswick, probably many of you people are aware of what I'm going to talk about. In New Brunswick, on George and Albany especially, they have a function on the walkway that if a person wants to cross the street, it is voice-activated. And I would like to see Highland Park look into this for the benefit of, like I mentioned before, especially the women pushing their babies across the street, this is voice-acclimated, which is a beautiful feature, and I would like to see this find out. Possibly you, Mayor, can look into this. It's a beautiful feature, and I think everybody in Highland Park will benefit this, by this, especially the handicapped people and, and any pedestrian crossing the street. If any of you get a chance, go down into New Brunswick and right at George and Albany, just press the button, and the voice comes, it's voice-acclimated. It tells you when to cross the street and when not to cross the street. And I would like to see this feature in Highland Park.
Yeah, there, there are many traffic or pedestrian enhancements that we've been talking with.
Can you talk up a little bit?
Sure. Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. So there are many pedestrian and bicycle enhancements we've been talking with the Department of Transportation about, and the chief and his staff are actually now in the process of discussions for improved safety along certain portions of Raritan Avenue. We can certainly add the voice activation to the list of things that we're talking to them about. That's, again, the Department of Transportation.
Again, I'll repeat myself. I would like to see the Borough of Highland Park look into this because it'll benefit every single pedestrian in Highland Park, and it's a good safety feature also.
Right, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Foster Dublin, who is our liaison to public safety, to speak to that.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
We'll be, we have been meeting, and we've been looking into many different kind of traffic safety devices, street calming devices. We'll add that to the list, and we'll let you know what the findings are.
Okay. I'll be waiting. Thank you.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Didier Jimenez, and I'm from Hillsborough. I'm coming, I'm coming here to say a few words about the situation because I have a lot of friends that live in this town about the Trump situation, how hostile people are lately when it comes to the whole sanctuary idea. I came here at the age of nine years old. My parents brought me here for a better life. They never even finished their elementary school. They grew up in dirt floors, so for them to bring me over here and offer me the education that this amazing country has is like winning the lottery for me. It means a lot. I'm twenty-eight years right now. Since then, I've been working in the community, volunteering for multiple charity organizations like Make-A-Wish, Wildlife Conservation Society, Autism Speaks, and I was even featured on a Cheerios Box for helping raise over a million dollars to help fight hunger. I love helping the community because the community helped me back. When I was here and I went to school, nobody said, hey, let's not help the immigrant over. No, everybody embraced me, everybody helped me out, and that's, I believe that's the language that we choose, love, every single time. So there's a few kind words that Lady Liberty has, and they say, give me your tired, your poor, your horrible masses yearning to breathe free. Making this town a sanctuary town will dabble down on that message. We might not have Lady Liberty a block away, but these words have to be echoed in our country, in every town, in every city. They push with hate, we're going to push with love back, and I really encourage you to look into it, see what people work is needed, and if the town ever needs help from me to make it work, I'm your servant.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming and speaking up to us, and I hope that hostility that you mentioned was not being felt here in Highland Park, but I suggest that you consider moving here.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Reverend Seth Copperdale. I'm here just to speak a few words about sanctuary and why I want to encourage the council to take it seriously. This is a moment to share that publicly, right? I think I'll start just with a story. In May of two thousand and six, five in the morning, I got a phone call from Harry Pangamanen, who's sitting here, one of our residents in town. At the time, he was living in Avonel, New Jersey. He called me. He was hiding under his bed with his pregnant wife. ICE was surrounding their apartment complex. By the time I rushed there to that complex, thirty-five dads had been taken out of their apartments, put into Middlesex County Jail where they spent a month, and all thirty-five were deported. Sixty children lost their parents in that one raid that was connected to Operation Return Descender. That was President Bush's attempt to show a strong hand while he was trying to push through what was considered a loose, light immigration policy, and he wanted to show toughness. What we have experienced now since January twenty-fifth, executive order called Securing the Interior, is like Operation Return Descender on steroids. It is not just about showing a little muscle, it's about eradicating from this country three million people is the president's goal of the eleven million, who are the lowest hanging fruit. This is not about going for criminals, it's about going for the good people in our communities who are in this country without proper papers due to the insistence by our Washington politicians due to the insistence by our Washington politicians to not actually come up with meaningful immigration reform. And so we're left in this mess where it's parents who filed deportation orders, it's folks who would have been DAPA eligible, it's youth who are DACA eligible, it's folks who are just here in the complicated mess caused by our engagement in the world and irresponsible ways that have led to dramatic poverty and war. That's who's here. And we're now, we're now trying to pull them out of this country. This town is and has always been a beautiful welcoming town. And it's true of New Brunswick and it's true of so many of the places. And just listening to the beautiful reports, I mean, it's moving to hear about all the different solar efforts and just to hear going through, you know, what recreation and community support is about. Each of these categories, it's what a full life is about. But right now, it's not a time about welcoming, we know that this town's welcoming. We need a town that defends, that insists that we are gonna defend our people against our own government. Because our own government is not behaving in the will of the people anymore. We have somebody in power who is saying loud and clear that he wants to hurt our community. So, at this moment, you know, sanctuary for us means the town saying those words, sanctuary. Even if we're not sure of all of what it means, every town's gonna play it out a little differently. We were particularly impressed with Mayor Steve Phillips' take on sanctuary that was in his executive order this past week. But there are other things, and I believe that a creative town like ours might become actually a leader in what that, what that looks like. I've been very appreciative of Councilman Hirsch meeting with me to discuss some things such as, you know, when a faith community decides to offer sanctuary, as we have done in the not too, you know, it wasn't too long ago that Harry, again, had to spend 11 months inside our church building so as to stay with his U.S. citizen children. We, you know, when we did that, we were, you all let us do that and you made the necessary adjustments to allow us to do it. But to get to that place where, where we as a town say, if congregations of all faiths want to offer physical sanctuary, not only is it like acceptable, but it's actually something that you stand for with us. That's the kind of thing I think that could begin to let this President know that towns are actually on the side of those who are stuck in this, this mess. So, there's a lot of thoughts I have about this. I'm aware of the meetings and proper amounts of time, so I'm gonna stop there. But I, I just thank you for acknowledging that, that this is something you're taking seriously. We just came straight from a vigil in New Brunswick for a mayor who currently decided to say something different. And I think he'll be thinking about it too. So every town in, in New Jersey right now is thinking about sanctuary and I'm proud of what feels like the direction this town is thinking about it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Moving on. Clerk, would you report on advertising the Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer or employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Seeing none. Resolution, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising Administration of Government Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 3, Administration of Government, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Any public hearing? Okay, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
You got it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the Bond Ordinance for Water and Sewer Main Repairs for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond Ordinance, providing for the repair of water and sewer mains in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, appropriating $200,000 from the Water and Sewer Utility and authorizing the issuance of $200,000 in bonds to finance part of the cost, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication are on file. The ordinance has been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law and the supplemental debt statement filed in the Clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction was received by the Division of Local Government Services on January 17th, 2017.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Public hearing? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on advertising the Fire Department Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 39, Fire Department, was duly advertised for consideration passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Public hearing? Okay. Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title, please?
Motion.
Second.
I'm assuming adopt?
Adopt, motion to adopt.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of the Bond Ordinance Amendment Land Acquisition for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title?
Bond Ordinance amending Bond Ordinance numbers 1881, 1894, and 1897 to increase the appropriation by $5 million and to amend the description to include the acquisition of additional parcels of real property in the borough has been introduced, has been duly advertised for consideration, has been introduced by the Finance Committee, saying it wrong, by, for consideration passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of Downtown Redevelopment Plan Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park concerning the Downtown Redevelopment Plan has been introduced and writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of Traffic Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7, Traffic, has been introduced and writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of Claims Approval Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 16, Claims Approval, has been introduced and writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on introduction of Police Department Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 64, Police Department, has been introduced and writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Last, resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations, motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the items 21771 through 21785?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing Ms. Perry Neary to the Arts Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor, for this appointment. He's staffing up, excellent worker, and I support her, yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Walsh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Any additional public discussion? Mrs. Bicard?
Ms. Bicard, 307 Magnolia. All right, I'll give it to my list here. I'd first like to respond to this gentleman. I was...
Wait, Mrs. Bicard, just one second, could you check, somebody check and make sure her mic is...
She has to talk into it. I'm sorry, yeah.
Take the microphone off?
No, I'll turn it this way.
Oh, that's better.
I was 10 years old and had legal papers to Cuba. And we were on the boat and we couldn't get off. And President Roosevelt wasn't powerful enough to override what his cohorts had to say. And we went back to Europe. I was blessed, that's why I'm here. But there were close to 300 other people on that ship that never got out. Mr. Trump should be shamed of himself. Sidewalk, salting. Please, my four-legged friends can't go out for walks. Thank you. Because the sidewalks are strewn with chemicals, with piles of salt. They're sand. It works very well on my neighborhood. I wish other people would be a little more considerate of those four-legged little critters. That's number one. The cross, the street at Third and Magnolia, south of Third Avenue, the road was repaved a number of years ago and it's in fine condition. But then comes that crosswalk. And I go either that way to cross the street or into the street towards Raritan Avenue because there's nothing but piles of repair dump after another. Please, go take a look. And as soon as the road is possible, repair that before somebody gets hurt.
Okay, hang on one second. Councilman Walsh, would you? Well, actually, I think code enforcement is now with economic development? Okay, would you make sure that Scott Presser gets out there to check the?
Thank you. Next item. I'm concerned about safety and security. And now that, right, it is open 24 hours and has very little traffic in the evening, lots of cars that do come in and they usually probably come in to pick up last-minute groceries or even some alcohol and so on. They come out on the entrance side. We're walking harmlessly along. The roadway is wide, so there's not for two cars.
Right, I've seen that myself, Mrs. Bicard. Chief, is there anything we can do about that? There are people that are driving into, I should say, out of the entrance. Right Ed, yes. I can't hear you.
I'm not sure to give us the authority, Title 39 authority,
Thank you.
Otherwise, make the roadway too narrow, just for one car.
Yeah, but no, cars are still gonna go out that way, I see, I see that myself.
Can I respond to the traffic buttons? The padding over it is broken. And so people, my fing, my thumbnails always break off when I try to push hard. But on Friday night and Sabbath and on holidays, Jewish holidays, when they have the lighting change automatically, then the walk sign also comes up. If you don't push the button the rest of the week, it doesn't change. So, thank for some citizen in this community, I don't know, but she crossed ahead of me me, and she pushed me out of the way. Otherwise, I wouldn't be talking to you here today, because somebody's decided to out, there's no sign to say, there was only the green light.
So, I'm not, I'm a little confused. Tell, explain it again. So, when you, on a Shabbos or a holiday...
When it's automatically set, then, when the light changes from red to green, the walk sign also goes on.
The green, the little person?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of the time, if there's nobody standing there and you're walking toward the section, the cars, the green is for the driving, but not for the walking.
So, you're saying the pedestrian sign does not go on?
That's right.
When the button is pressed?
You have to press the button.
Oh, so, okay. So, I think, I think we talked to the DOT about the motion, lights, didn't we talk to them about that?
What's the location? While I'm calling them, I'll have a check down. Well, I just find it wherever I happen to be. I'm a walker, so it's... Is this every block on Raritan Avenue or... Well, it doesn't have all the, not all the time, but I think most frequently, it's at Fourth and, Third and Fourth Avenue, from the south crossing over to the north. Because that's what I usually want.
Okay.
One question, I have a question, I don't even remember why I put it down. Park Partners.
Yes.
What was that about?
Okay. So, Park Partners is a program we instituted three years ago, and we advertise it, and people can submit a grant proposal for something they would like to do in Highland Park to improve the quality of life here. And I think there are five different areas that you can submit for. One is the arts, one is health, one is public safety, environment, and human services. And so, people submit grant proposals, and then we have an event where they, sort of like science fair style, they set up a table explaining what their grant would do, and then residents come in, they fill out their name and address, so we make sure they're really residents, and they get to vote on the top five grants, one in each category, that they would like to see get the money. At the end of the day, we take all of the votes, and they are added up and counted, and then the top five winners get a grant of up to $2,000 to do what they want to do to help Highland Park.
Come on, sign up for this.